It's 7:30, but let's give some more time.
Yeah. Quite certain councillor Connell and Con are coming. I don't know about Joe.
Joe was on a committee meeting at 7:00. He has a conflict. Okay, just missing councillor Connell. Let's give him another couple of minutes. All right, well, I guess councillor Connell will catch up. Before we convene tonight's meeting, I wanted to have a moment of silence for Pete Kelly. Pete passed away on July 20th after our last regular meeting. Pete Kelly is the same Kelly as Kelly's Hardware originally, what Kelly's. To hear him tell it, I'm not really sure ever really wanted to get into the hardware business. He was perfectly happy at Portsmouth Naval Shipyard, but his dad needed help and he took over probably 1971. He was involved in our Chamber of Commerce, our Rotary Club, Anna Jakes Hospital Board of Trustees. I knew him best from his work with the firehouse, where he served, I think, for something like 15 years according to his obituary, but I think longer than that. So I think we would be remiss if we didn't have a moment to remember Pete. He was a big part of this community for a long time. He was living in Newbury there at the end, but as I'm sure he would point out, he was still generating taxes for our city. So let's please have a moment of silence for Pete. Thank you. Let's call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councillor Zee.
Here.
Councillor Devlin is absent. Councillor Con.
Present.
Thank you. Councillor Lane.
Here.
Councillor McCauley.
Here.
Councillor Connell has not joined us yet. Councillor Shan.
Present.
Councillor Tontar.
Present.
Councillor Vogel.
Present.
Councillor Wallace.
Present.
Councillor President.
Here, and I've promoted councillor Connell, so he's on now.
Wonderful. I will include him as present. We have 10 present, one absent.
Okay, before we get to public comment, and I'll give instructions to that in a second, do we have any late filed items?
I'm happy to report there are none.
That's fantastic. Okay, now we're going to go to public comment. The way we do it these days is please raise your hand electronically. I see one hand up already. And I will call on you in order. You each get two minutes. All you have to do is state your name and your permanent residence, wherever that may be. We don't discriminate if you're a non-resident of the city. We just want to know who you are. And I'll keep time and warn you if you're running out. So in order, the first person that I have is Lynn Scow.
Hi councillor Augerman, thank you very much. My name is Lynn Scow. I live at 75 High Street in Newburyport. And I wanted to speak today about an important issue facing our city, which is the reopening of the schools. And I understand that the budget for the city will be presented this evening, including funding for the schools. And my question is how we can possibly vote on a school budget and included in a regular budget when we do not have a plan that has been released to the public or approved by the school committee to date. I have a lot of concerns from speaking to many members of the school committee and people on the reopening committee and others that we are not on the right track, especially with respect to the high school, where we have been told by Andy Wolfe, even before this plan has been adopted, that the hybrid quote unquote plan that is being offered is all remote with one 90-minute period every two weeks for a Clipper period for the students. New York State has set a reopening bar of a 5% positivity rate deemed as a safe place to reopen schools in person. New York City has made that 3%. As of August 8th, which was Saturday, in Massachusetts, we are at a 1.8% COVID-19 positivity rate. The city of Newburyport itself is a 0.3% COVID-19 positivity rate. If we cannot open our schools, including even halfway for the high school at a 0.3% COVID-19 positivity rate, when are our schools going to be allowed to open? I give a lot of credit to people on the task force, especially some of the health people that have spent a lot of time putting together an extremely safe plan. But a zero-risk plan being demanded by some of our teachers is not in the best interest of our students. You can't do cohorts at the high school. I get that. They're not required under law. Six feet distancing is not required under Massachusetts law. Three feet is. And the models that have been run at the high school for saying that we can't reopen with six feet distancing failed to account for the 20% of students who responded in the survey that they will be going remote only. So my question, my point to the council today is we need a lot more community discussion of what our schools are going to look like for our students. And thus, a budget can't be voted on. That includes funding for schools when we don't even have a plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scow. Next, Colin Sarf. So you're unmuted, Mr. Sarf. You just need to unmute yourself.
There you go. Hi. I'm Colin.
Yep, please go ahead.
I live at 23 Charter Street. And I wanted to, first off, say thank you for the, I think, the proclamation and recognizing the DCC awareness. And just wanted to give a little quick thing on what it is and it's DCC, it's disorders of the corpus callosum, which corpus callosum is the fibers in between both hemispheres of the brain. And it's basically, I have a diagnosis under that, which is under autism spectrum, and it's a genesis of the corpus callosum, which means I have no fibers connecting each side, but I'm high functioning. And I just wanted to have that recognized as people awareness of anyone, people in the know on it, basically. But yeah, that's it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sarf. Thank you for bringing it to our attention, and we will get to that under item seven in communications. Thanks for taking the time tonight. Next is Matthew Kane.
Good evening, guys. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So first, I'll be short by just saying I agree with everything that Lynn just said. And so I won't rehash what she said. I think the concern here, everybody in the room knows how important it is to get our kids back to school. The spring was a joke. Kids didn't learn anything. And we cannot continue to just kick the can down the road and hope this thing goes away, because right now it seems like the only way our kids, our high school kids are going to get back into school is if we have a vaccine, and that's just simply not acceptable. We have a lot of facilities in our town that we can utilize. There's a lot of people in this town that can be utilized to assist. I mean, you could imagine a tent over the high school field to help if social distancing is the big concern. There's so many different venues that we could explore going out to, but it seems like this task force has been kind of, you know, closed knit. You know, I'm not sure how it got selected, but you know, I'm not sure if you guys know, but the school committee wasn't even part of the task force to reopen. So as a parent of a high school student, I just, I have such grave concerns, not only for them, but in speaking with a lot of parents in town, I don't know even how to stress this. How angry people are about this. I mean, people are already talking about picketing and demanding tax dollars back. This thing could spiral out of control beyond any of your wildest dreams. I'll close in saying this, like a lot of you in the room, I'm a business owner, I'm a small business owner. And this COVID thing has been horrible. But what's come out of it is we all have to pivot. We all have to re-figure out how to reinvent ourselves, how to reinvent our businesses. And on the city side, we have to reinvent how we're going to send kids to school. I think we should send them all back. I think that there, you know, if you look at the stats, 15 kids in the United States out of 45 million, you know, died. So we can do this in such a low, particularly Massachusetts and Newburyport. So just stress, I know that this is not your, you know, it's a school committee and not the city council that makes these decisions, but guys, you need to be aware of how bad this is going to get really quick if we don't get answers and some positive momentum to get kids.
Thank you, Mr. Kane. Next is Mr. Doucette. Or, well, Mr. Amiz Doucette, RJ Doucette.
Hi, this is Rick Doucette, 69 Marlborough Street, Newburyport. Matt and Lynn both brought up a lot of good points. You know, obviously, I think what it boils down to is you can't pass a budget without a plan for the schools, particularly since the school makes up roughly half of what the city budget is. I think it's kind of crazy to think that we're going to try to pass a budget without knowing exactly what the plan is. Matt brought up a lot of alternatives. You know, and that's the thing, like, we can't even think about those alternatives until we know what the plan is, and we need to understand what the budget is, you know, in order to operate under that. So the idea of trying to pass a city budget when over half of it's going to the school and we don't have a plan for the school, I just think makes zero sense. So I'm not going to rehash what they said. But I do think, bottom line, need to have a plan before we can pass a budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doucette. Next is Bill Harris. I need to unmute yourself, I think.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. I wasn't planning to speak, but thinking about safeguards for reopening schools with at least in-person attendance. By the next city council meeting, I will get to members of the city council and other health officials in the city. Information about the improved opportunities for the use of waste, pretreated wastewater as an early warning management tool for communities. I know the city has had at least a one-time freebie from BioBot Analytics, and that's great. But one of the best uses of the pretreated wastewater, which is shedding of COVID-19 that can be collected in a thing called messenger RNA, is that if you have a resurgence, it will give you a faster and more reliable indicator, better than what you will get from testing individuals in hospitals. And the Centers for Disease Control is in the process of funding 190 sentinel cities. BioBot Analytics has 375 sampling sites in the US. I won't give you the details now, but if you're considering a partial physical presence in the schools, this could be a very useful safeguard to know if we're going from a low rate of COVID-19 positivity on tests, et cetera, to a higher rate. You could even do testing at the manhole near the schools. That's been done in many places. So by the next city council meeting, I'll get you information on this. Free very soon, and it could complement plans to use at least partial physical presence at the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next is Megan Kinsey. Just remember to give your name and your street address. Let's see. Megan, you're on.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Excellent. Awesome. Megan Kinsey, One Griffin Court. Thank you so much for taking my comment. I'll make it short. I just wanted to echo Lynn and Matt and Rick's sentiments instead of rehashing. I want to, again, I guess, thank you guys as the city council for coming alongside small businesses when we were facing what we were facing earlier in the season. And in that same vein, I want to implore you to come alongside even school committee and the public in an effort to think as outside of the box as we need to. It was mentioned using turf, using I mean, we have so many spaces. We use the parks now for our fitness classes. What other venues can we utilize within the city to spread the kids out as necessitated to, not necessarily meet six feet, but three feet as mandated by the state, to do whatever we need to do to get the kids in the classroom? It's, anything less, I mean, going online for the entire, gosh, fall semester is just, I can't even I can't even wrap my brain around it to even accept the fact that it might be possible. So you guys did a bang-up job last time with the whole idea of restaurants and fitness studios. My goal is that I'll help you. I know that Lynn, Matt and Rick will help you, and a lot of other people are behind them who will help you come alongside creating a plan to get the kids back in front of the teachers and in front of each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Holly Knutson.
Hi, Haley Knutson from 7 Columbus Avenue, Newburyport. I just want to, I don't want to rehash the same, but I want to express my support for all the other parents who have spoken on this. I think it's obviously the the ultimate subject for tonight. I think they all made great points. I just want to reiterate that I feel exactly the same as they do. I think as a town, there are things that we can do to be creative, to get the kids in other areas, and to be able to facilitate that with parents using private transportation and things such as that, that we need to explore beyond just the the regular day-to-day of normal school functioning and spreading children out. And that's really all I need to add.
Thank you very much, Ms. Knutson. Next is Katie Accardi.
Hi, Katie Accardi, 481A Merrimack Street, Newburyport. Again, same thing. I'm a parent on this call. I'm not going to reiterate anything else that everyone has already said. I will just add a few things that I just think the city, you know, I think Matt said it earlier. We really need to focus, like the city has pivoted, businesses are doing it, whether it's a Fortune 500 company or a small business owner. Everyone has had to change in these unprecedented times, and our schools should do the same. We have some amazing resources in this community, and I think now more than ever, we need to tap into them and use them. I was a part of the reopening task force proudly. Took a lot of time to be a part of it, but I am very concerned that the plans have not been released. I don't understand how we could possibly look at a budget or vote on a budget when we don't know what the school year is going to look like this year and what those plans are going to entail. I think it's important that we pay attention, you know, it's not just sending all these kids back to school, but the social emotional well-being of these children. There were surveys that were sent out. 80% of the community felt they would send their children to school. That is a big number, 80%, and that really needs to be focused on. There are options for those that do not feel comfortable sending their children to school. It can be remote learning. That is offered regardless, as the state has mandated. But the children, the 80% that feel that they can go back to school and their parents are comfortable sending their kids to school, we need to give them an option. So I just want, hopefully, the city council, like they did for the restaurants in this town and the small businesses, we really need to take that energy and focus on the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Accardi. The last hand I have up is the Coopers. Please give your name and street address. Let's see.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yes, just need a name and address. Yes.
Of course, Brendan Cooper, 5 William Hall Drive. And I just wanted to start off in full support of all of these other parents that have spoken up on behalf of the youth who are not being well-supported here in this situation. Never once did I think I would wake up in America any day and be told, no, we can't do this, whatever this is. And you've heard the rates already. You've heard about the reports that have gone out that the abundance of the parents want our kids going back to school. We've had, with myself specifically, a junior and a senior right now, both rising, looking at their final years, preparing for college and taking some of the most difficult courses that they can't possibly learn just by doing it all online. So those that don't want to go, those that want to be remote, they can do so. They have that option. We were told in the bottom of a very long email that there was not going to be anything going on going forward in terms of a remote apartment, in terms of a hybrid option. And that was not good as it pertains to high schools. Just not fair. So what it takes right now is thank you to you all for your leadership, and it really is going to take leadership going forward to give these kids a chance, because right now they don't have a chance. And there are a lot of them right now that have been asked personally, would you like to go back to school? Do you want to be there? And they do want to be there. And in addition, I'm starting to hear that there are other kids that maybe don't want to go back, that they're concerned about what the outcome will be and the stress of being in the school. There's too much stress. We've seen what's gone on with them out of the school. They want to come back, and I hope you'll support us all in bringing them back to school at least part-time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. I don't have any other hands up. Last call on public comment. So we'll close public comments and go to the mayor's comment. So let me unmute the mayor. Mayor Holliday, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Good evening, councillors, council president, members of the city council. I sent you a fairly comprehensive update a few hours ago. It's been quite a bit going on in the city. So I will address the school issues momentarily, but let me start in the order that I presented your update. Safe routes to school, pretty comprehensive information from Jordi Vining from the planning office about where the project is. Most of the drainage has been completed on High Street. They need National Grid in a couple of weeks to help secure a couple of poles while they finish some of the drainage. The big issue that arose recently was the raised islands on High Street and the difficulty of trucks getting through and crossing over the island. So the decision was made to make the cobblestone, make them cobblestone islands flush with the street. And MassDOT is reviewing that design change at this moment. More details in your update for you there, and also a picture of potentially what that would look like. Again, Clipper City Rail Trail, I'm very pleased, finally, after a long, tedious, difficult process with DEP and EPA, we are finally moving forward with the backfill plan, which has been approved. We just need to get the fill certified that it's clean, and that will hopefully happen towards the end of August. And we still need to do some more work on the inside of the fence at the wastewater treatment plant in terms of some additional testing. But we anticipate by mid-September, the fence will come down. The backfill will happen, and that the rail trail at that section will be opened. So again, there's more detail in the update there in terms of everything that's going on. I'm also pleased to announce that the governor and lieutenant governor notified the city last week that we've been awarded $100,000 in a MassTrails 2020 grant, which is support of the rail trail, which is to raise the berm and the storm surge to add money to that part of the project that will happen down the road. In terms of our paving plan, unfortunately, last year we ran out of time in terms of being able to do everything that we wanted to do. So we're continuing to work on major sections of High Street, but we had hoped to have completed High Street and Merrimack Street at the end of the construction season last year. Unfortunately, we didn't. So that we are continuing with the Merrimack Street paving. The other problem that we had was we had to wait till the second week in July before the legislature and the governor signed our Chapter 90, which is our roads and sidewalk money, which is about a little over half a million dollars, which is absolutely critical for us in terms of moving forward with our paving and sidewalk projects. So we had hoped to have those High Street and Merrimack Street completed prior to the start of this year, which then we would have kicked in the beta engineering plan, but unfortunately, that's not where we are. So we are working on finalizing the beta paving plan that will happen in the fall and will kick it off next season, which is a five-year plan. So this year, what we're working on is in terms of paving Merrimack Street from Donner Drive to Ashland Street. We will do Dennett Drive and Finnegan Way, Malcolm Hoyt, and East Boylston Street. That's what we can do with the money we have. And then, in addition, most of the sidewalk work will occur on Merrimack Street from Coffin. We're hoping to get as far as Broad Street. And that information is in your update. In terms of school reopening, in conversation with city council president on Friday, you know, we discussed the challenges of trying to move forward the city budget, including the school budget, without having a plan approved by the school committee. So the decision was made that we would delay giving the budget to the city council until the 18th, which is the day after the school committee meeting, which will take a vote. The entire meeting will be devoted to the reopening, and the council president and I discussed that the city council should be part of that meeting. And I think that's clear from what the public comment was tonight. And I spoke to the superintendent before the meeting that that was the plan, that it would be a meeting with city councillors and with school committee members as we move forward on the reopening plan. I sent you three attachments in an email today. One was Dr. Sue's plan as an epidemiologist who's been working directly with the schools around the health and safety needs of each of our school buildings. We're very fortunate to have her working with us. We're very fortunate to have her working with us. It's been a very challenging time. Part of it is because of the difficulty with definitive information and tight timelines from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We had really hoped to have more direction from them coming in before the close of schools. And as a result of the lateness of their directives, we have now added ten days to planning time before the opening of schools, which would be September sixteenth. Now, I know that everyone is anxious to hear formally about the reopening plans. And in my conversations today with the superintendent, he's working on a plan for Wednesday to bring the local cable in to the middle school to have a videotape of an overview from the superintendent, then each of the principals will discuss their reopening plans. That will be posted immediately on the city, school and Newburyport Hub website for people to weigh in. Each school will have a Google Doc, which questions and answers from parents to begin to, you know, ask those questions as we go forward. So I encourage everyone to, I will send the link out to the council. And we will also make sure that everyone is aware when that taping of those plans is available to the public. So people can review them and weigh in before we have a very important meeting with the school committee and city council on Monday night. There's a lot of information in the update about the plans that have happened to date to get us to this juncture. And would encourage you to review those as I had sent. As we said, as I said, the budget will be presented to the council on the eighteenth. And then we'll begin, it's important, I think, for the public to understand that the council will receive the budget on the eighteenth. But there is a series of forty-three days of meetings and workshops where they will vet the budget before in September, they will take a vote. The ordinance review committee has been established. Mayor appointees Paul Swindahurst, Greg Oden, Lieutenant Rick Smasco, Ron Thurlo, Mike Strauss, council president appointees, council president Igerman, councillor Connell, councillor Khan and Jen Conley Esquire. I'm assuming that councillor president Igerman will sort of unite this group and pick a chair and they will begin the work the charter requires every five years for them to review the ordinances. In terms of reopening plans, we had a meeting with the senior center director and the health department. And again, please keep in mind, the senior center was initially designed for seniors with a community component. Seniors are our most vulnerable population. Right now, they're doing some Zoom and some outdoor activities under a tent. We hope that continues through October, weather permitting. And then we will begin to transition seniors back into programming in November and December in the senior center. So not until after January first will we consider opening the senior center for other outside events and other groups. The library has opened with a limited plan. Things to date seem to be going well at this point. And we have also restarted our senior tax work off program with some seniors because of city hall continuing to be shut down to direct public asset access. We have online support, we go outside, you can make appointments. And so readers were comfortable coming back and being able to help us in terms of meeting the needs of residents there. So we really are not in a tremendous hurry to open up city hall at this point. We're concerned about the increased cases in the state as things start to go forward. And hence why, working with the board of health and the health director, we initiated a mandatory mask policy. You'll see signage downtown A-frame signs, and we're also adding more signage around that. I was happy to see increase in compliance this weekend. It's really important if we are to continue with the successes we've had with keeping the COVID virus down. I've started doing, I took a little break for a couple of weeks, but have been back doing my Thursday afternoon cable message. And on Thursday at four o'clock, the superintendent will join me to, for additional discussion about school reopening. And finally, I just wanted to announce that I was very pleased that Newburyport has been accepted as a housing choice designation community, which also helps us as we go forward with affordable housing projects and plans.
Thank you, Mayor. And yeah, the the housing choice is a good recognition. We really have done a lot of work with our zoning and programs to make sure we have housing options. Now it's time for questions for the mayor. First question is from councillor Vogel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hello, Mayor.
Hello, councillor.
I just wanted to, I missed a little bit of what you were saying about the signs and I did have a question. I was out and about last weekend and certainly noticing the signs. Are you anticipating changing any of the language of the signs? They're awfully meek, you know, that please wear a, please wear a mask. It doesn't seem to be, you know, very strong in its message.
Well, the other signs we're putting up is mandated a mass zone. And those are being printed, being created, there'll be metal signs, it'll be on lampposts all over the place. We were trying to find that balance there for sure.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Shand is next.
Hi, Mayor. I was just wondering about the ongoing investigation about the incident that happened at the Bull Nose. I was just wondering if there are any updates on that.
Yes, we've spoken to the investigator. He had two interviews to complete on Friday. And we anticipate, he asked for a week extension, which we granted. And we anticipate having the report this coming week. Certainly after we do an internal review, we will work with legal in terms of what needs to be redacted and will certainly, as soon as possible, get that report out to the council as well as release it to the public.
Thank you, Mayor.
One thing I did forget to mention in my update, because it happened late this afternoon. You know, I have been working hard to get Highway Safety, who did the botched job on High Street with the line striping, been working with our city solicitor, try and get a conference call with the insurance company that we filed a claim. And in fact, that is happening tomorrow at eleven. And I will update you after that meeting in terms of the outcome. Hopefully, it will be positive.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
All right. Clerk Jones, consent agenda.
Certainly. The consent agenda this evening consists of the approval of it's more on the consent agenda than we usually have. So firstly, we are approving the minutes for July thirteenth and July thirtieth. Secondly, we have two communications, communication two fifty-four, which is a letter from the Moselyev residents and including a map with respect to their concerns about sidewalks and safety. And communication two fifty-five, which is world disorders of the Corpus Colossum Day, which we heard from Colin, very nicely spoke about that at public comment. We have no transfers. We have one first reading of appointment, which is appointment one eighty-four, which is for Richard J. O'Brien from forty-one Olive Street to the trust commission until August fifteenth, two thousand twenty-three. But that leads us to the following matters that will be removed from the respective committees with a vote from the consent agenda. General Government, Order one ninety-seven, Planning and Development, Order two oh one. Public Safety, Applications four, five, six, seven, eight and nine. Communications two thirty-seven, two forty-six and two fifty. And lastly, the emergency preamble for the Order one ninety. And that in a nutshell is the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Unless someone has an objection, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, on to regular.
So the regular, we have the mayor's update first.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's filed. Please proceed, clerk.
We have, we have no second reading of appointments. That leads us to communication two fifty-three, which is a table matter. It's with respect to Charter two dash seven, the notice regarding the Newburyport Youth Services.
Motion to take off the table.
Second.
Second, all those in favor, and we have, just so you know, we have Director Egmont meeting in the wings. All those in favor of taking off the table, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That's unanimous. So let me unmute Director Egmont. Nope, there, there she is. Director, thank you for coming in. And I, the councillors all have the written questions. And you, you had written a response to me, but I thought it was worthwhile for everyone to hear everything at the same time, if that's okay.
Absolutely. Would you like me to start with an overview?
Yeah, start with an overview and then we'll rifle through the questions.
Okay, well, hi, everybody. I hope everybody's hanging in there these days. I want to start off by apologizing for any confusion. We tried to change any language that went out away from the word merger. But apparently in some of the things, it still came across that way. And I think in a few pieces, it was actually used, the word merger was used. So I want to give you a little bit of background on what has come about. So for the last, I think, twenty-five years, the mothers' club, then now, or turned into the Greater Newburyport Family Club, approached me as they were looking at whether or not they needed to disband. And they had actually come to us because they had a few really great fundraisers that are, you know, kind of institutionalized, have been around for a long time, which we all know in this community has a lot of value. And so they wanted to ask if we were interested in taking on some of those events through the Friends of Youth Services. My response to that was, of course, we were very interested in that, but I was very sad to hear that they might be in a place where they had to end the organization. And I, we began a conversation about the importance of some of the things that they had done as an organization. So from that, I met with the three of the executive board members and talked about what it would look like for youth services, really just to take on a couple of what I had prioritized as functions that the club had offered our community that were really incredible. And I have to say that their response was a lot of gratitude. I think there was a lot of relief at the idea of not just having to say, oh, okay, everything that's been here is gone now. But rather that we would take on a few of the things. So as an organization, they disbanded completely. The five oh one C three is over, the board voted to end. They had no funds left, that was part of their issue. So there was no issue of money or us taking on any money. We did ask that a few of their board members consider joining the Friends of to transition those events. And they were glad to do that, which is really great for us. And like I said, I had prioritized what functions the club had that I thought really made sense to be a part of Youth Services. And those were, the top three were having the playgroups created for new moms, new families to be connected. I think that that is a really incredible support system is to be able to say, hey, I don't know anybody and I have a baby. And suddenly have a group that meets every Tuesday. The second being the early education fair that I know personally I went to and was blown away. I had no idea what was out there. And I just think it's been a really incredible service to parents in the, in the whole area. And then lastly, wanting to keep some family events going, that people could get together and go and do activities. And again, like building that sense of community and supporting parents. So that's what we really agreed to. The press that went out was in part, you know, wanting to show the twenty something years worth of volunteers. For any of you who've been involved in the mothers' club, the board of directors is like bigger than the Patriots. I know there's a ten thousand people that take up different roles. But I know, I know that we have folks whose kids are grown and out of high school who look back on the mothers' club as a really amazing resource. And so I wanted to help them transition as an organization and be able to say that the legacy of the work that so many people had done was not gone and that it was going to be part of Youth Services and would continue. And I think that's where the term merger or absorb, we were trying to find a word that was soft as opposed to just Youth Services is going to take it over now. And so I think that's where some of that language got a little mucky. But to be very clear, there's no merger, like no corporate merger, no funds. There's not even a written, you know, agreement, we're not held to anything. It's, I think it's a goodwill understanding that we're going to try to continue with as much of those pieces as we can.
All right, thank you very much. Speaking for myself, the only question I had, I don't think you covered of the seven, was physical changes. So for example, connecting new parents with newborns and infants, that doesn't seem to suggest any physical space need or staffing need, but I don't want to put words in your mouth. So that was the third question. Does any of this mean a physical change at NYAS, including staffing or programming?
No, I wouldn't be taking on anything that required more than what we have. And I, I mean, I'll say that even with what we're hoping to do with COVID, I mean, who knows what we're even going to be able to do this year. So that, everybody has that understanding. One of the things about the playgroups in particular is that we have a preschool room that has limited use during the day. And I actually think it would be pretty awesome to create playgroups and give them a place to be. As a, as a mom myself, I wouldn't have felt comfortable getting to be a part of a playgroup and expecting to have people in my own house, simply because I have a little place, right? So I think it's, I think it's really nice to be able to say, hey, we're going to create playgroups. And if you need a place to meet, we have that as well. So all of that is within it. As far as staffing, Margot and I met and went over what it would mean to take on these, you know, these few things. And the really nice thing was that there are a lot of current members right now of, of the club who said, you know, we really want to stay on and still volunteer and help organize some stuff. And that, I think that's really great to hear. But a lot of it is really already part of what we do, you know? We already have after dark dance parties for, you know, for families of kids under five. And so where it's, the capacity is there, so there's no extra need for that. And any, any funding, the idea is, would come from the additional fundraisers that we're now going to be taking over through the Friends.
Okay, thank you. Other councillors, councillor Zede.
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to follow up on some of the comments. So I guess the thing that I'm hearing that that makes me want to ask questions is, it does seem like there's a bit of a blurry line to, for lack of a better way of describing it, between the, the youth services component as, and when I say youth services, I'm referring to the city department as opposed to the Friends, which, if my understanding is correct, is also a private organization and a five oh one C three itself, separate and external from the city. So can, can you just clarify a little bit more about, I guess, what, what is, to the extent that we need to know or should know, what, what is the deal with, you know, Friends of taking over versus the actual Youth Services city? It seemed a little bit unclear to me and I think folks should know that, you know, Friends of, while it is, you know, often obviously benefiting the city, it is a private organization to its own, unless I'm misunderstanding that.
No, the Friends, no, the Friends of Newburyport Youth Services is a five oh one C three, they have their own They have their own Board of Directors. They actually just voted Ashley Swam in as their new president. They, their mission is to support NYAS. Basically, it's financial support as well as advocacy for the department. That is their role. I am an ad hoc member of the Friends. Obviously, I am a part of the conversation, so that they're aware of what we're doing. But just like the Friends of the Library, and just like the Parks Conservatory, like we have several models of this in the community. So they, they are, you know, they had their own agreement, agreement as far as taking on and continuing those fundraising events. Youth Services will not have anything to do with that, other than possibly volunteering, as we like to volunteer for the group that helps, you know, fund us. But that is, the fundraisers themselves are through them. The event and the programming, so the early childhood event, annual event, and then the programming, like the, the playgroups and family events, that's under us, that's our programming. So it's not really a blurry line, and there's a pretty clear line. They do fundraising, we do programs and services.
You all set, Counselor?
I am, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Khan, did you want to say something, or?
No, that, that actually helped, thank you.
Okay. All right, I think we're all set. Thanks for taking the time, Director Egmont, and really appreciate the answers.
No, my pleasure. I just want to mention, you should have all gotten an email today with our new COVID-19 Parent Resource Guide. We have a mental health task force that works very hard, and compiled a really amazing website. So for any of you who are able to share that with your constituents, it's also linked on our Facebook page right now. But it's a pretty awesome resource, I'm very proud of the work that they did, led by Tina Loos, who's been incredible. So, thank you, everybody, I hope you have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor receiving and filing, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, on to orders.
Order 202 is that the City Council accepts with gratitude a gift from the Newburyport Pioneer League in the amount of $1,000 for additional survey work as part of the Lower Atkinson Master Plan Project submitted, Counselor Tontar.
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Next item.
Order 203, which is the budget order, which is the same budget order that we have submitted every year. I want to apologize and say, I may have created some confusion, because on the agenda, I referred to it as a three-month appropriation budget, but it's actually a yearly budget. First budget we had was three months. With that clarification, it's very standard, and it's submitted by all members of the council.
Your motion?
Motion to refer to budget and finance.
Second.
Mr. President, may I, may I speak?
Yes, if you have a further motion, or you can speak to it, or, because then I have Counselor Zede to recognize.
Okay, I would like to move that this be continued until August 17th at 6:30, at the joint meeting that the City Council will have with the School Committee. So this is a subsidiary motion to the main motion, which is to refer to budget and finance.
And there's a second by.
Second.
Counselor Khan. Discussion on the subsidiary motion, as the motioning party, Counselor Tontar, you can go first, and then I need to get to Counselor Zede.
Sure, so the intent here is, since we do not have the budget, and won't have clarity on what the budget will be until after the School Committee votes on it, essentially, except, you know, except in the order of referring to committee, but rather than refer to committee now, we're going to wait until we have more information. I think on the 17th, the intent would be then to refer, to finish the reference to budget and finance. And then, just so the public understands, that's when the Budget Finance Committee begins its workshop process, where department heads meet with us. We explain, we, we ask questions on their funding, and essentially go through it almost line by line. That takes place over a two-week period of time, with, with plenty of opportunity for, for public participation. And then, there will have to be a hearing on the budget, that's why the charter, somewhere in there. And then, then it will come before the council, even the first to second meeting in September, is the intent.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Counselor Zede on the subsidiary motion, which is to continue for one week.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to be opposing this motion, and I do have some comments, so I ask for your patience. I just want to make them, I'll make them as fast as I can. You know, that, every year I go through the budget process, we all do. This is my fifth budget, and I think, well, you know, every year is tough, but this is easily the worst budget. And I said that, I think, three months ago, and we did a three-month budget, and somehow we've already eclipsed that. And it's not because it's a tough year, and obviously, we're all very concerned about how we're going to meet our obligations. I certainly am concerned, that's one. It's also not, you know, it's, it's not because, you know, we don't know exactly where this thing is going. Certainly, I'm concerned about that as well. But, you know, this budgeting process is really to be, to be, for lack of a better word, has been a failure. And unfortunately, in this case, when we really needed a good process, we've had really a rough process, and I think it's produced, you know, so far, a bad outcome. I hope towards the end of my comments, we'll be able to find a way towards something better. The budgeting process, so that the public knows, as Counselor Tontar said, actually starts in November of the previous year. And that starts off with a joint meeting between the City Council and the School Committee. I think most or all of us on the call here on the council end were at that meeting. And of course, that was pre-COVID, and relatively speaking, life was a lot easier. And since that time, there have been several meetings. We then arrived at a three-month budget back in July, we had some discussion about that. Folks can go back and replay the tape on, on that budget, which sort of narrowly passed, I think, going seven to four, if memory serves correctly. But the real shocker for me came last week, when I decided to listen in on a school committee meeting that was give or take about four hours, four and a half hours. I was really attending partially as a counselor, but honestly, equally so, or more so, as a parent, just trying to figure out where school reopening was. I was absolutely shocked to hear that about three and a half hours into that call, there was a request to vote on a budget. There were only two pages in the School Committee packet, there was no detail. And after a very brief set of discussion, that budget was passed. It was just absolutely shocking, of course, as an attendee, you can't participate, so you can't say anything. The next day, I emailed, and I asked if I could see the full budget that was apparently voted on. Unfortunately, I was not able to get a copy of that bluntly, I'm not sure that it exists, as it was still being worked on. And certainly, it's, you know, it's, it's a bit mind-boggling to vote on something that's sort of vapor at the time. And, and as I'll get to towards, in a few minutes here, I understand that this is a tough time, but there's no excuse for that sort of thing to happen. How can you have a budget and pass it without knowing what the budget is? And to the point made during public comment, how can you have a budget when you don't really have a plan? Schools certainly do account for a large part of our city budget, and we've, we've fallen down a little bit on coming up on a plan. Now, besides just the opening plan, having followed the budget closely, the school budget, very closely in fact, you know, there are other concerns. First thing is that, you know, it takes about $1 million just for the schools to keep an even keel, to meet its requirements as far as contractual obligations go, and meeting teachers' salary increases, which are contractually obligated, we vote on those on the council. And that $1 million ends up being about 3.5%. So where we sit today is basically a flat budget, where we sort of are ignoring the fact that a pandemic is happening, and that may, there may be additional needs. In addition to that, I've listened into several calls where there have been some discussions on some very substantial special education costs, special to this year. While I'm unable typically to get exact numbers, the budget hole on that one appears to be somewhere between $400,000 and $500,000. It started off as $1 million, and then was, was quite the discussion for about a week and a half or two, and then disappeared. Last week, on those paltry two pages that were in the School Committee packet, there was some discussion of another $500,000 shortfall, so in my estimate.
I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I don't mean to cut you out, but I just want, if you could just sharpen to the, the motion for us to do a joint meeting essentially with the School Committee next week. Your points are all valid, I just want to keep it on the motion, though.
Well, the reason I'll be opposing the motion today is that we shouldn't be continuing. This whole thing has to go back to the start. The School Committee needs to come up with a plan first, in conjunction with the superintendent and with the public. Then a budget for the schools can be put together, then the School Committee can vote on that budget. Then that budget can be incorporated into the city budget, which can then come to the City Council. I'm a little bit frustrated to have to curtail my comments, quite honestly. But I think I'm expressing the fact that the, the process has been going on for a while, and all of a sudden, we just have an abrupt halt, and we're saying, look, the damage has already been done. The fact that a budget was going to come in tonight is absolutely ludicrous. There is no plan, so how can there be a budget behind it? I'm going to oppose the motion to continue, I think we should receive and file this order. We need to back the bus up and start at the right point. I'm tired of hearing that we have to wait for the state, and everything that are problems, our roads are bad, because we have to wait for the state on Chapter 90. We have a problem with the schools, because Desi isn't getting back to us. That's the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education you heard of. Enough is enough, we need to back up here, do things in the right order, and try and salvage this school year before it becomes a lost year, which it's already on the precipice of becoming. So I'm going to oppose this motion, I ask my colleagues to do the same. Send the message that we need to back this thing up and get it right. It's August 10th, this is our last chance to get it right for this school year. And we can argue about whether to open the schools fully, or how we're going to do it, but certainly, we'll need to have a discussion about how it's going to be a success. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, I tend not to stifle you, I'm just trying to sharpen to the motion. Counselor Khan is next.
Oh yeah, thank you, Council President. So I, maybe I'm a little confused. I thought we were going to take this up then, on the 18th, if I heard that correctly. So I, I believe the second part of the motion by the other at-large counselor, I thought, did that. But if not, can someone please clarify? Because that's what I thought we were going to be able to do.
Well, actually, I may, I may have caused that confusion, because after the mayor wrote her mayor's update, I did have a conversation with her, and with Chair Tontar. I thought it would be efficient to have the meeting with the School Committee in real time on Monday, the 17th. So I'm sorry, the confusion between 17th and 18th, that's probably my fault. I had suggested we do it jointly, so I'll be chairing the council part, and the mayor will chair the School Committee part, but we'll do it in real time at 6:30 on Monday. That's the motion, as I understand.
Excellent, yeah, thank you, and I support that, so thank you.
Okay, before I go back to Counselor Zede, are there any other counselors who haven't spoken yet that want to speak on, on the motion? Okay, Counselor Zede.
Yeah, I just wanted to make one other comment. I just want to play out the next about 10 days for folks, so that the public can understand how little opportunity they're going to have to participate. So supposedly, on Wednesday, there'll be a taped message, as the mayor indicated, where evidently some or all of the details that's unknown as to the reopening plan will be presented. I didn't hear anything about a written plan. I personally have emailed, and I'm still waiting to see what was submitted to the state, which should and is a public document, but I've not been able to get a copy of it. And then Monday, the School Committee is going to meet, perhaps as a joint meeting, as was just indicated there, and maybe take public comment, where folks will be able to speak for two minutes, hear the School Committee deliberate, and then immediately vote on a reopening plan, thus setting this, the year off, into a certain direction. And supposedly, during all this time, apparently, the budget that's already been put together and was going to come in tonight, and in fact, the School Committee already voted on, as I indicated last Monday, is maybe going to change, or maybe not going to change, likely going to come in exactly the same way. I can't see how anybody on this council would support that process, and, and let, make people feel like they've had an opportunity to sound off, to hear, to listen, to read a reopening plan, and to participate in it. And I'm just very frustrated, I don't think that's a good process. I'm not blind or deaf to the challenges that we're facing with respect to the timing, but we're basically, we're taking a bad situation, and we're making it worse. So what's really the difference between supporting this motion, which is a motion to postpone, is that we can, we can change that process. This is our chance to change that process. If we go forward with this motion tonight, then we're basically saying, yep, that process is okay. And then we can hear about it in our next council meeting, which will be the 29th, by which time, it will be well too late to try and change or alter the course of this very large ship that we're trying to steer in a certain direction.
Thank you, Counselor McCauley is next.
Thank you, Council President. You know, back in, in June, I, I voted for the three-month budget, and I did so with the caveat that I have to let this play out, and I have to take into account the situations that were playing out on the ground, right? That COVID was a situation, and that I needed to trust some folks that they were, had everyone's best intentions. And when I see this school budget, I, I was wrong. I do support the Ward 1 counselor. I've been asking some pretty simple questions. I thought, I'm, I'm looking for a plan that has been vetted and operational, that meets the district's goals for learning excellence, that can be implemented via a supportive budget. And everything that I've, I've been able to cobble together, as an outsider, is we have the budget, school budget from April at 3.5%, which is an in-person one, that doesn't account for any of the optional plans, it doesn't account for technology, it doesn't account for training, it doesn't account for any of the changes that would need to happen. It's, it's, in a nutshell, a blank check that, you know, will, that we hope that the school administration will be able to shuffle things around, to be able to get to the results that we all hope we can get to. And, and I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about that, because the, the council itself only has approval or subtraction authority when it comes to the school part. And let me pause here for a second. I, I think that the city budget and, and the other, the other aspects outside of school have done a great job in trying to look deep into how they're going to operate, and, and the, the needs they have versus the wants that they want to have. And I look forward to going through that. But the schools concern me. You know, the schools don't represent 50%. When we factor in all the costs, they're closer to 68% of the total budget. And that should be a concern for everyone. I've done some homework on my side, outside of the city, and I realized that there are, there are better plans out there. And not to say we don't have a great plan, it's just, I, like everyone else, have not seen the plan. So I, I came into this saying, I'd love to have a joint meeting with the School Committee, but then I realized that the School Committee, that School Committee meeting can never last long enough, right? That joint meeting is going to be what, two hours, four hours? I think we need like, you know, four or five of these types of meetings, to be able to vet this appropriately, and have the public weigh in, which is, should be there, right? And be able to get this operationalized. So I will, I, I will change my vote, and I will vote not to accept this, and not to accept the continuance. Thank you.
Thank you, back to Counselor Khan.
Yes, thank you, Council President. So here's a couple of things that, I just, again, getting clarification. So we are, if I remember correctly, when we approved the three-month kind of continuing, or the appropriation, how we wanted to find that, we also said that our, the full annual budget would be brought to us in, in mid-August, which is now, our next meeting's August 31st. So I see this as that, that step that was given to us. And the only thing missing, and I think we, we talked about it, is that we would then, so we don't have the budget books, but the process was going to be having the departments, the city departments, just, let's, you know, talk about that first. Would we, we would have the opportunity to, to go through and talk with them, and have them identify, I, I thought, again, their budget and what would be needed before us. The only thing I see missing here in that part, and I, and I do agree with some of what the Ward 1 counselor is saying, as well as the Ward, Ward 5 counselor, is there is none of those additional details that we tend to get when we get the budget books. But I do know this is a little bit of an unusual process. So I, I'm wondering, can we get to a point, especially now, you know, with the focus on the schools, is there a way that we could? the schools, is there a way that we could put something in this in terms of our acceptance or the joint school committee and city council meeting, but being able to get a copy of what they proposed, what that budget's going to look like for remainder of the year, for us to kind of be able to have a useful conversation that will also include the reopening plans? Now, I know Wednesday is when these presentations will be done, but I'm wondering if on Wednesday too, if we were to get a copy of the additional details needed, then we could, it would give us time for that meeting. Now, I'm confused, on the 17th or 18th? I believe the 17th, because that's when the school committee meeting is. Then we could maybe put something in here to, to make that a requirement, and then we could move forward with that conversation on Monday with the school committee there too. I'm throwing that out as a, I don't know if it's a condition, a condition on the acceptance. I'm, I don't know, trying to come up with some ideas, but that's something that I'd like to entertain with everyone here.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Wallace is next.
Thank you, Council President. I have a question for the Ward 1 counselor, if I may. You express concern with the process of how it's gone and how it would go very quickly if we approve this amendment. In your opinion, what would be the ideal process? The Ward 5 counselor touched on it a little bit, talking about much more time going through with the school committee. But what do you think would be something that would help you feel better about our school budget in the end and the process it goes through?
Okay, that's a direct question for the counselor. Counselor Zee, are you able to answer? Please, go ahead, Counselor.
Sure, thank you. I was going to wait to jump back in. No, I think it's a very fair question. I just think that, you know, if you, if you want a direct answer, if we have to meet Monday through Thursday of next week in order to make a real dent on this discussion, then so be it. So that would be the meeting schedule I would suggest for next week. And preceding that, perhaps one of the most important things we need in order to have, so I understand where the at-large is counselor is coming from, wanting to see a copy of the budget that was going to come in tonight. I certainly have no objection to seeing that. But what we need is, we need a written reopening plan, and it's got to be substantial, and it has to cover, there are examples out there. If you'd like to see one, a resident sent me one from Kentucky. It's about 30 pages long. It covers all aspects from remote learning to in-person, how testing will be done, et cetera. That is the foundation for the discussion. If you have a plan, then you can start to figure out where the budget's supposed to come from, from there. So while I appreciate a video, I think that a written plan needs to be published so that everybody can read it. There's been a lot of rumors floating around over the last seven to 10 days about the high school plan, and you heard some of that in public comment. I managed to hear it as well, but I'm not going to repeat it because it was unsubstantiated, so I don't really know exactly what it was. But it was a hybrid that didn't seem to have a lot of face time, and you heard a little bit of that tonight. So if you want a prescription for success from me, a written plan needs to come out by Wednesday. Then it can come into the school committee on the 17th. There should be no votes taken on the 17th. That would be extremely fast if everybody's just, so that's on the one end. So yeah, okay, Sharif, it's easy to say, hey, you want to take your time, but it's also getting into late August. If we have to meet four nights next week, I will give up all four nights of my week to do it. I can't speak for anybody else. And then perhaps a vote could be taken early the next week. That's probably the fastest you could possibly do it without disenfranchising most people, if not all people, from the process. It can't happen the same way the school budget did.
All right. Counselor Wallace, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay. Unless you have something else, I'm going to go to Counselor Connell. Counselor Connell.
Thank you, Mr. President. A very quick question, since the Chair of the School Committee is in attendance tonight. Last question, if we can get a response. We've had several references to documentation. We're used to having time to, and this is an unusual set of circumstances, but we're used to having time to, to wade through the documentation from both the school committee and the city at large. And I'm wondering if that kind of documentation can be forthcoming so that we can be prepared for our meeting on the 17th with the school committee? And I'd like to direct this question to Mayor Holliday directly.
Sure. Mayor Holliday, are you able to respond? If you're on, you're muted. Let's see. Now you're on. Mayor Holliday?
Yes.
Yes. So I think the question directed to you by the counselor is documentation and time for next week's joint.
Yes, so in the budget that has been developed by the schools, they have incorporated the reopening of the school in terms of costs. We have separated out costs that are covered by the ESRS and CARES grant, which helps to contribute to the total operating budget of the schools. And I will work with Nancy Lysick, who's been instrumental in pushing this budget forward, and to have them prepare a budget that separates out the traditional operational budget and the needs for us going forward with our reopening plan. I don't know if I can have that done by Wednesday, but I certainly will work to get that to you by the end of the week in terms of, and to the school committee, because they're, you know, asking for the same documentation. We did, in fact, approve a budget on April 23rd. That was a year budget, but again, that was before we really began the deep dive into reopening the schools. And I agree with you that you need more information, as well as the school committee. So had been pushing the superintendent to try and present some information to the community, which is why they opted for the Wednesday night, or the Wednesday video presentations. And with that, needs to be a clear budget about how we are funding the reopening of the schools. So I will work with the superintendent first thing in the morning in terms of teasing out those sections of the budget and be sure that those are separated so that it's a clear document going forward.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Counselor Tontar.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I certainly understand the frustration that the Ward 1 and 5 counselors have articulated tonight. I share it. I would like much more information than I have. However, I don't understand the tactic of not continuing this order until Monday night, when we see where we stand. I would suggest that we, we vote in the affirmative to continue this until Monday night, hear what occurs in that joint meeting with the school committee. At that point, if we feel there is not enough information, then we don't have to vote to refer to budget finance. But I'd like to give the district, the school district, and the administration the opportunity to generate the information, you know, until next, so that we can review it. We won't review it. Obviously, I don't want to threaten anyone, but, you know, obviously, we're going to, we're going to need that information to proceed with the budget process. I think the administration and the district knows that.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there other counselors that have anything to say on this motion? Seeing none, I think we can, let's do a roll call. It's motion to continue to date certain. Everyone understands it's Monday, the 17th, 6:30 jointly with the school committee. Kirk Jones, let's.
Be happy to, Mr. President. Requires a majority vote. Counselor Zee on the motion. Counselor Zee?
No.
Counselor Devlin is still absent. Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
No.
No. Counselor McCauley?
No.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tontar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
No.
Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Need majority vote, receiving majority vote, the motion passed, postponed until the 17th.
Okay, so we don't reach the underlying motion. If we reach it, it would, it would be on, on Monday.
I think this takes precedence.
Yes, takes precedence. So I will, I will send a notice of the special joint meeting, so everyone has it. I'll get that out as soon as I can. And again, to clarify, it will be on the agenda, but it's fate. This is not determined until we meet. Okay, where are we?
We're at Order 204, which is the Newburyport City Council Resolution in appreciation for 2020 Yankee Homecoming Committee in giving back to our community and beyond, sponsored jointly Counselor Khan and Counselor Lane. And it says, in essence, that the Yankee Homecoming was first conducted in 1958, as we all know. It's the second oldest festival in the U.S., valuable and much anticipated summer event by the city of Newburyport. They have included annual events such as bed races, showcase road races, Old Fashioned Sunday, waterfront concerts, a family day, Market Square Day, Craft and Fear Day, Edison Fairs, fireworks, and a grand parade. COVID-19 has impacted this in a substantial manner. And however, they have continued to support local businesses as well as bring joy and lift the spirits of the community through social distance activities such as drive-in movies, virtual races, door decorating, food drives, blood drives, capture the flag, Takeout Tuesday, veteran lunches, as well as volunteers to expand the reach by offering a Senior Buddies program. So therefore, be it resolved that in this year, Newburyport recognizes and appreciates the effort of all those involved, including Yankee Homecoming Officers Dennis Palazzo, Cheryl Munich, Jason, and Lucian McCroy. That is submitted resolution by members of the city council.
I believe the sponsors at the top are Counselors Khan and Lane. So I'm going to recognize Counselor Khan has her hand up. Each sponsor has precedence.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Motion to, I believe we said to maybe postpone, so we have time for having this sometime to, it's not an emergency, so motion to postpone our vote until our next meeting on August 31st.
There a second? I heard a vague second.
I heard from Counselor McCauley.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right. Any discussion on postponing for our next regular meeting? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? That's postponed to three weeks from now. Wonderful. All right, Order 205, what we got?
We have a hybrid in-person, remote participation policy, which is intended to replace the Order 179, which was passed on April 27th. And it is a fairly lengthy document that I'm sure Counselor Zee, who is the sponsoring counselor, can explain better than I.
Counselor Zee?
Thank you, Mr. President and Mr. Clerk. So this is a revised version of the remote, you know, meeting plan with a little bit of a new, new title to accommodate the concept of having a hybrid meeting. As everybody remembers, we've had some iterations of this plan since we first came up with it back in April. I want to make it clear that I'm the only sponsoring counselor. There are other names in here that just are listed out based on who's on the ad hoc, but the ad hoc has not yet discussed this. And that reminds me that I didn't make a motion. So I'd like to motion or refer this to the ad hoc on remote and committee of the whole to start.
Second.
Any discussion on that referral?
Yeah, I just want to just say, just a few more seconds here. So I spared everybody the red line because the red line was a complete mess to read. So this is, you know, a lot of the first page and portions of the second page are really the same as they always were. The most salient differences is the establishment of both in-person spaces and in-person rules. I'm the Chair of the ad hoc, so we'll meet on this as soon as we're reasonably able. And the goal will be to try and, you know, depending on what the committee thinks, and of course, being committee of the whole, everybody's input is welcome, including if you don't like the plan at all, to try and bring it out for a vote on the 29th so that it could be in place for our first meetings in September. So I trust you'll read it, and if there's questions, the ad hoc, I'll keep you posted on when those meetings are to be posted for, so that we can, and since it'll be committee of the whole, everybody can participate as desired.
Thank you. Counselor Tontar on the motion.
Yeah, thank you. I'm not going to offer an amendment on this. I'm just going to make a suggestion. I'm not on the ad hoc committee, but to members, I would very much like to see this be reviewed by the Board of Health. I think they have the expertise on this. I think, I think the, what council has done a great job in terms of articulating the potential from the point of view of, you know, protecting the, the health of members of both the public and also of council members. However, I think there's also a public policy aspect to this, where if, if we do meet in person, that, that sends a signal. And I would like the Board of Health to weigh in, because this is in their area of expertise. I know I have heard from the public some criticism of, of the school committee for having met in person, and for exactly the reason I just said. So I strongly urge that the ad hoc committee run this by the Board of Health, and at least solicit their opinion on it.
Thank you, Counselor. Other counselors on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of referring to the ad hoc committee and remote participation, say aye.
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 But also, and, and committee of the whole, Mr. President. I beg your pardon, and, and committee of the whole. Let's do that again. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so.
Mr. President, could I also interject that due to a, so we say scribblers era, Counselor Zee should be on this as the counseling, as the sponsoring counselor.
Oh, yes, sorry. I should have noted that too. We caught that last week. Sorry about that. So Counselor Zee, you don't need to give a committee report. Please let us know when you schedule that.
Counselor Zee, thank you.
Committee of the whole. Okay, now we're on the ordinances. Doesn't look like we have anything.
We don't.
Committee items. The first committee is the Ad Hoc Committee in Economic Development. We've not met. I have nothing to report there. Budget and finance?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Education?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, general government, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion as Chair to approve Order 197.
Second.
Yeah, okay, second. So quick discussion, we've actually talked about this in special, special meeting last week, and our committee, general government, discussed it also last week, but I forgot to ask them for a recommendation. We had a meeting this evening at 7:00. All members were in attendance, including Counselor Devlin, who had a conflict with the full council, and they recommended three to nothing to recommend approval. Any other counselors wish to speak on the matter? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting Order 197, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that's all I had of general government. Licenses and permits, the Chair is not available. Who's the vice chair? Do we know? No, I don't think we have anything.
I don't think we do.
Okay.
We don't have a vice chair.
We don't have one? All right. Neighborhood and city service?
Nothing is coming out, but I do want to report to the members some progress that we've made. We met last Wednesday, August 5th, to talk about two items. One was the curb cuts ordinance, which we're actually making some good progress on. It's a little more complicated than I might have anticipated, but I think that the active participation of the council president, as well as the sponsor, Counselor Wallace, has resulted in some improvements to the draft, which you had some questions about in a previous meeting. So we're actually going to hold off until we get all of our ducks lined up and take this up, hopefully, out of committee. We're planning to have it at the next meeting this month on the 31st, and I thank you for your patience. And the second item we talked about was the Phillips Drive project. It was mostly for the benefit of the residents of Phillips, Phillips Drive. of Phillips Drive. Our consultant is on the job, four to five months. The consultant's work will be done, looking at the analysis, the engineering analysis, and making some recommendations about ways in which we can mitigate the water problems that are there. They're also committing to having at least one and probably more than one public meeting with the residents, which we think, we think as a committee is a very worthwhile thing to do. That having been said, we did decide to keep this item in committee so we can stay on top of it until we finally get some shovels in the ground and start improving the situation of Phillips Drive. That's it, Mr. President.
Thank you, Chair Connell. Chair Shan, Planning and Development.
Sure. Motion to approve Order 201, Intermissible Agreement Between the Cities of Amesbury and Newburyport.
Second.
Go ahead, Chair Shan.
All right. So this is a memorandum of understanding between Amesbury and Newburyport on the dispersment of the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar Community Development Block Grant we received. To back up, the money is from federal funds. It is from the CARES Act. The funds were dispersed to the state. The state opted to allocate through community development block grants because there is a process in place to disburse such funds to entitlement communities. Newburyport is not one of those communities. Community Development Block Grant Funds come with restrictions. Microenterprises are what they're allocated to. Those are employees of five or less. That includes the owner. This also has income restrictions as well. Those are provided by the HUD. Business owners can't earn more than the median income, eighty percent of the median income of the area. In this area, that's around ninety-four thousand. Community Development Block Grant Fund distribution is, it's a paperwork process. So Matt Coogan, Chief of Staff, used the May survey data to determine how many businesses in Newburyport could apply. And they did a further survey after the grant was discussed, giving them the opportunity to talk to the businesses to see if they were still interested with the restrictions that would be in place. And in our community, forty-two businesses said they could apply. Since it is an onerous process, it was made sense to team up with Amesbury. Amesbury has a, an experienced manager who's dealt with community development block grants before, and that is the person they chose to be the program manager. So it made sense to team up with Amesbury. Newburyport and Amesbury did receive the max available. That was eight-hundred-thousand dollars. It's split evenly between the two communities after some of the administrative parts are dealt with. That is listed in our, in the order. You'll note, there was one light item that sort of stood out to most of us. It was the amount that the program manager would be getting extrapolated out. That looks like it's a very large sum that the managing person would get, but the expectation is the funds will be dispersed within two to four months of the program getting kicked off. And that kickoff date is this Wednesday after Amesbury votes tomorrow night. The max a business can get is ten-thousand dollars. For Newburyport, the plan is to have a rolling dispersment. The plan is to have this announced to the community and have an application deadline, and then the applications will be reviewed. Funds will be dispersed, and any funds that remain, there will be a second round of application. So we'll be able to look at how much time is allocated by the program manager and probably pull some of that money back so we can have more money to give out to the small businesses. We did ask if we have the opportunity to have businesses who receive the grants be listed on the city website, and Chief of Staff Coogan said that was a doable item. We did amend two items in the memorandum of understanding. You'll note in line seven, the added clause is, "The clause shall not be construed to limit liability as it relates to the city of Amesbury's responsibility as defined under Sections Two and Three above." Counselor Zee did comment that this would be a good spot to add this because we don't wanna have the program manager of Amesbury walking away with eight-hundred-thousand dollars. And with Amesbury being the lead here, it would be their liability. The other item that was added was to number ten, which basically added the approval of the City Council to the line. And that is built-in suspenders based off of what we heard from Chief of Staff Coogan. That is part of the last whereas clause in the document. Basically, we're just reiterating what Mass General Law says. So with all that, the committee did vote three to zero to approve the memorandum of understanding as amended. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes. Other Counselors have questions for the Chair or comments on the motion? I'm not seeing any, so let's do a roll call.
Okay, this is on the motion to approve Order Number 201. Counselor Zee, can you hear me?
Yes.
Counselor Zee?
Yes.
Counselor Khan?
Yes.
Counselor Lane?
Yes.
Counselor McCauley?
Yes.
Counselor Connell?
Yes.
Counselor Shan?
Yes.
Counselor Tantar?
Yes.
Counselor Vogel?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
And Counselor Agaman?
Yes.
Motion passes, ten yes, one absent.
Thank you. Chair Shan, was there anything else?
That is it tonight. Thank you, Council President.
Okay, thank you. All right. Public Safety. Chair McCauley.
Thank you, Council President. The committee met, and we've got a bit of cleanup to do. I'd like to make a motion to receive and file for applications four through nine. There's a combination of them being withdrawn, canceled, postponed till next year, et cetera. But I'll leave it at that. So I'd make a motion to collectively receive and file application four through nine.
Second.
Further discussion in the motion to receive and file these applications? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, continue.
I'd like to address each one, each one of the next four, but I'd collectively like to make a motion to receive and file these four.
Second.
Okay. Go ahead, Chair McCauley. Tell us about each one.
Great. Thanks. On Communication 237 Walnut Street, there was a concern about the status and safety of the home. That has worked itself out with a sale to a single individual who has filed appropriate paperwork to renovate the property, so we feel that should be withdrawn. Communication 246 led to the City Council regarding the opposing the opening, excuse me, opposing the closing of State Street. We had included that with the minutes of the meeting as well, so there's no real... And we've included it as part of the discussion, the public discussion for Order 180. Communication 250, letter from Elizabeth Gulod regarding the resolution on racial justice. There's actually two letters there. I've included both of those letters, not only in public comment for the meeting on public safety, but attached them as well to the written minutes that were approved by the committee. And Order 190, emergency preamble, there's not really a need for it anymore because we took the resolution, gave it to committee, and then put it back. So again, this is a matter of cleanup. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Did any Counselors have any questions or comments on receiving and filing these four? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Anything else, Chair McCauley?
No, thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you. Chair Zee, Public Utilities.
Nothing major tonight. The only thing I wanted to update the public on in particular is that I did hear from the DPS Director that the Bayberry project that we had talked about, you know, if you will, pardon me, goodness, if you will recall, was to replace underground wiring, and we had some discussion in Public Utilities that that project is gonna be going forward. The Ward Five Counselor, as far as I know, has been made aware as well. So for anybody listening out there, I'll certainly work to provide more details. And I'm sure Counselor McCauley, as the Ward Counselor, will probably do better than me at that. In this case, I just wanted to let folks know. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Vogel on Rules.
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good of the order. I have something. So I, just for the benefit of the public, good of the orders when we talk about just sort of internal, inside baseball, how we run things. So I just wanted to clarify that whoever happens to be President of the council has to administer our rules. And you may have noticed, we do have a rule, for example, that public comment is limited to two minutes. I always give leeway, as all Presidents do. People go over, give them a warning. Similarly, the mayor is given seven minutes to give her report. I usually allow her to go over. She's, you know, she's not watching a stop clock, and I let her go over tonight. But none of that is meant to be favoritism. And then, you know, as Counselor, Counselor from Ward One, Counselor Zee and I were talking about his comments on a motion. That's different. There is actually no time limit for Counselors. They go on as long as they're germane. And he was germane, and I just wanted to sharpen up his comments, but I meant no disrespect to anyone, any of the members of the public, or the mayor, or to Counselor Zee administering rules. So I just try to be fair. I don't always succeed. That's all I had. How about a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Nope, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Night.
Good night.